We'll go ahead and. Thank you for joining us and thank you for anybody tuning in and we have a number of people outside. We appreciate them being here as well. So we'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll? Adamson?
Here.
Ray?
Here.
Salem?
Yeah.
Merrick?
Here.
Warren Salem?
Here.
Stevens?
Stevens? You can hear the.
Sorry, here.
La.
Here. Thank you. If you'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance after which we'll remain standing for an invocation, which will be observed by a moment of silence. Our clergy members, see the flag.
Five United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, for nation peace, with the chief and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. We will move to agenda item three is a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion. If any one member of the council saw desires, any matters can be moved to a separate agenda item. A minutes, council may wish to read the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes of the clarification of radio council meeting of October 15, 2020. B, the treasurer's report has been pulled. We will hear that report on December 3. C, reservation committee appointment, council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of the mayor's board to say that a member of the historical commission file during a vacancy. This ward's term will begin November 20, 2020, and will expire November 20, 2023. D, human relations advisory committee, confirm the mayor's reappointment of Almond Sup. To continue his service as a member of human relations advisory committee, Mr. Southworth's term will begin November 19, 2020, and will expire November 19, 2024. E, Idaho Transportation Department child safety seat grant police, council may wish to approve an application to the Idaho Transportation Department in the amount of $15,563 and $15,635 for the purchase of purchasing and distributing child passengers safety seats or police staff as certification training and education for police staff. And if the grant is approved, authorize the mayor to accept and sign documents related to the grant. This is an annual grant and vote will match in the amount of $1,100 is required, which will be covered through the donations to the safety seat program. And F, council decision, the triangle subdivision flat note excluded. Council may wish to adopt this decision to exclude three notes from the triangle subdivision flat recorded September 28, 20. September 28.
Mr. Mayor?
Chairman Tatum.
Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval of the consent agenda items A and C through F.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Tatum and a second by Stevens. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Salem?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Yes.
Merrick?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item four, communication proclamation.
Mr. Mayor, do you think that we could possibly ask everybody who's on to mute? Unless they're speaking because that way we don't have all that background noise going on toilets flushing and dogs barking and everything else.
Absolutely. Yeah. If you're not speaking, go ahead and mute, please. Thank you. Uh, let's see. Communication and proclamation, agenda item four, we do not have any. So agenda item five is a calendar review. On December 3 at 5:30 PM will be a clarification meeting. December 3 at 6 PM will be a regular council meeting. At on December 10 at 9 AM will be a work session. Other events, annual leaf collection continues through November 30. Leaves must be placed in compostable bags, not boxes or plastic bags. Leaves will be picked up on a regular collection days. City, city creek recreation area gates are closed to motorized access until approximately, approximately May 15, 2021. November 26 and 7, city offices will be closed to observe the Thanksgiving holiday. Garbage and recycling pickup for Thursday and Friday will be one day behind. The community recreation center will be closed on Thanksgiving, but will open from 9 to 5, 9 AM to 5 PM on Friday, November 27. November 27, Christmas light, night lights drive-through event in Old Town from 6 to 8 PM. As a reminder, face coverings are required when entering the city of Pocatello building or facilities or while riding public transport, public transportation buses. We will move to agenda item number six, appointment confirmation of chief financial officer, city treasurer, Kruger. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of James Kruger as city financial officer, city treasurer effective January 18, 2021. Councilmember Bray.
Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay. Mayor, I'm of that we appoint, uh, Mr. Kruger as our chief financial officer. Confirm our appointment.
Second.
Mr. Mayor? Ms. Mr. Mayor, could, could, could people in the know just give us a few pointers partly for the benefit of the public of Mr. Kruger's background and so forth?
Why don't we?
Online with us.
Why don't we have Mr. Kruger get on and he can give us that background real quick? He's on online here.
That would be fabulous for the public.
Jim, can you hear us?
I can hear you just fine. Can you hear me?
We can hear you fine, but we can't see you. It might be beneficial if you turn your camera on that the council can see who is talking. There you go.
They'll see me now.
All right. So this is Jim and Jim, the question was is can you give us a little bit of your background and, um, you know, I'd focus a little bit on municipal government and municipal finance.
Sure. Be glad to do that. Um, sounds a little bit like I have a frog in my throat. I apologize for that. I'll try to clear it out a little bit. So just real briefly, um, I wasn't necessarily planning on having this opportunity to give you this background, but I'll be glad to just give you a real brief sketch. So as you can see, I'm, I'm in my office here down in Coronado. I've worked for the city of Coronado for the last five years as their administrative services director slash treasurer. Before that, I, I was with the city of Garden City, Idaho for about seven and a half years. I've had many years experience in municipal finance. When I was with the city of Garden City, I was also the city clerk. And so I've had lots of years of experience related to managing the finances of municipalities, including those that are about same size as, as what Pocatello is, some that are a little bit smaller than Pocatello as well, but sure glad that you're having this item on the agenda tonight and I look forward to hearing what you end up deciding to do. Be glad to answer any questions that you might have as well.
Thank you. Any questions for, for Jim real quick? I think we're in good shape. Thank you, Jim. We'll go ahead and vote and we'll see if we can get you to Idaho. Back south to heaven, outside of our sunshine. Thank you. So we have a motion by councilmember Bray and a second by Tatum. Connie, could you please call the roll? Bray?
Yes.
Tatum?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Merrick?
Yes.
Warren Salem?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Fantastic. Jim, thank you very much for joining us tonight. Congratulations. We look forward to the day we can get you here and working like crazy.
Sounds, sounds great. I like to be crazy.
Yes.
Bye for now.
Have a great evening. Uh, we'll move to agenda item seven is a public hearing rezoned by contract to 1399 Bench Road. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Lockwood Development Partners LLC, represented by TJ Budge and of Racine Olson for a zoning map amendment by contract for the property at 1399 Bench Road from the existing commercial general CG zoning to residential, commercial, professional, RCP zoning to allow for multiple multifamily dwelling units. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the application after a public hearing on October 14, 2020. Uh, council, before we get going, I just need to ask, has there been any ex parte communication? I'm seeing a whole bunch of nodded heads and nodding no. So we'll go ahead and TJ, we'll turn the time over to you. I want to remind you, you've got a total of 10 minutes for this part of the presentation and then we'll call you back up if there's any questions or anything that it needs to be answered. So TJ, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. It's good to be with you tonight. I appreciate the technology that the city's utilized to enable us to participate by video, even though we can't be there in person. It's nice to be able to see the members of the council and, and so I appreciate the effort the city's gone to make that possible. I've got with me today, Dan McNulty, one of the principals of Lockwood Development Partners. And we're going to split up our presentation. So I'm going to take the first five minutes. I'm going to talk a little bit about the project.
TJ, yeah, so interrupt you. I need to open the public hearing.
I jumped the gun.
I jumped the, I jumped the gun. Uh, I declared a public hearing open. Okay, now you're doing.
Well, I appreciate you giving me a few extra minutes, Mayor. That's very generous. Uh, anyways, I'm going to talk for a few minutes about, um, a little bit about the project, but more about the city code and what a contract zone agreement is and why we think it's appropriate and why it was recommended for approval. And then I'm going to turn the time over to Dan. He's going to take the second five minutes and he's going to talk more about what, what Lockwood Development Partners does and put a little more color on how they intend utilizing, uh, intend to utilize the property. And so we'll split it up that way. I've been told that I'll have an opportunity to share my screen so that the rest of you can see my PowerPoint presentation on your computers. Let's see if I can, uh, I'm going to try that. That function is not working. Is there an IT person there that has to authorize me to share my, oh, here we go. Yeah.
Can you get it now, TJ?
Yeah. Sorry about the delay. It's, it's in, it's in progress here.
Okay.
Oh, there we go.
There we go.
Are you able to see my screen? It begins with a slide, application for contract zone agreement.
Yes, we are.
Thank you. This application pertains to the Clarion Inn property. I've got a photo of it here. Everybody, I'm sure is familiar with this property. This is, uh, one of the older hotels in Pocatello, but a well-known hotel. And, um, Dan will talk more about this, but, um, the hotel industry has really been challenged by COVID and some of these older hotels especially have struggled. There are a number of hotels, um, that as they age out and they get replaced by newer hotels like the Marriott's and the Hamptons, um, they end up vacant and blighted. And, um, this is a hotel that, that potentially could end up in that position. Lockwood Development Partners has come in with a kind of a unique way to repurpose this hotel and revitalize it. And the proposal is a mixed use development. I have on the screen an engineering drawing that shows an aerial view of the hotel. And the, the plan is to use this for three, uh, different but related purposes. So the part of the hotel that's dedicated to hotel rooms currently, that would be remodeled into, um, studio and one-bedroom apartments. And that would, uh, become age restricted housing for folks 55 and up. The target market is veterans. This facility is really being targeted to, uh, veterans and those, um, that are 55 and up. So that portion of the property would essentially become, uh, like an apartment complex. If you look in the middle of the hotel, this is the area where the swimming pool is currently located. That would be converted into an adult daycare. This is for people who, um, are able to be cared for by family members and loved ones at home. And they're not, uh, they're have not reached the point where they need to be in a nursing home, but they've got family that are, that are caring for them. And those family members sometimes need a place to take their parents while they take care of other responsibilities and, and this adult daycare would serve that purpose. The third part of the hotel, which is currently where the banquet rooms are in the restaurant, that would be converted into a current education center. This part of the property would really be utilized more by younger veterans, those who have left the service more recently and are transitioning back into the workforce. And they would provide workforce training and things of that nature. The reason that we're applying for a contract zone agreement is because of the mixed use nature of the property. A contract zone agreement is, is different than a traditional rezone. Under a traditional rezone, you rezon the property permanently and any authorized use, uh, within that new zone could, uh, could occur on the property. With a contract zone agreement, that's really a conditional rezone and we're rezoning it for one specific purpose. And when that specific purpose comes to an end, then the property reverts back to the original zone. And so what we're asking the city to approve is a rezone of this property for the specific purpose that I've discussed, uh, the multi-use of the Clarion, Clarion Inn. The next slide I have is an excerpt of the city's zoning map, uh, with the property outlined in red. The property is currently in the commercial general zone. The reason that zone doesn't work is that, uh, the commercial general zone only allows living quarters in upstairs stories. So they do not allow apartments on the ground level. And with this project, there would be, uh, some apartments on ground level. The contract zone agreement would rezon it to the, um, CGA zone. And I gotta remember what, what that zone is. That is the, or excuse me, the RCP zone. And you'll see a number of RCP zones nearby. Um, Grace Lutheran School is an RCP zone and, um, this is more of a mixed use zone. In the code, I put up an excerpt from the city code that describes the RCP zone. It's for a mix of residential, professional office and neighborhood commercial uses. And I've underlined in close proximity to residential areas and major transportation facilities. This is really a better fit for the project that we have going. Within the city code, there are a number of comprehensive plan goals that this project will advance. One of them is a variety of high-quality housing that's safe, sanitary, attractive and affordable. That's especially important for our elderly population, which is growing and for veterans. Uh, we also have a policy of.
I'm sorry, you cut out for just a second. Could you just repeat that last couple of sentences?
Yeah, sorry about that. And I apologize for speaking fast. This is what happens when I'm, uh, I prepare more material than I've got time for. But, uh, the point I was making is that this project advances several goals of the comprehensive plan. One of them is for, uh, development of a variety of housing opportunities that are safe, attractive and affordable. This is especially important for our elderly population, which is growing and for veterans. And there's also housing goal two, which is advanced by this project. There's a number of other policies that I've outlined here. It's, it's a goal of our comprehensive plan to encourage mixed use development that provides for a more livable and walkable community. This project is close to a number of restaurants, uh, churches and transportation infrastructure, which will, which will, um, provide value to the residents there. In the interest of time, I'm going to turn the remainder of the time over to Dan McNulty. And he's going to talk more specifically about, uh, the programs they'll offer in the property. And then as the mayor mentioned, uh, when our time's up, we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Dan, you've got a minute and a half, it looks like. You're muted.
How's that? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can now.
Okay. Good evening, guys and girls. Um, thank you. A minute and a half will, uh, am I able to share my screen as well? Uh, I think. If I put this up, will you be able to see it?
I don't know if we can. Okay, now you can.
Okay, let's try it. Got something here. Here we go. Okay. Okay. Share. Okay. Let's see if we can enlarge that a little.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me, let me go to a, my Chrome browser. How's that? Is that better? Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
You've got 20 seconds, so I'm going to give you another minute because I don't think you can say anything in 20 seconds.
Yeah, we'll, we'll send this, uh, package to you, but it's about 37 slides. Uh, what I want to underscore and actually TJ did a great job of what we're doing. But, you know, what we're doing is saving this property from becoming blighted and, and off the tax rolls. It'll be back on the tax rolls and provide jobs for the community. And, uh, truly as, uh, Veteran Services USA, we have a mission base here to help these folks out that are in the 55, in this case, in this property, 55 plus, uh, providing good shelter and, uh, again, through the adult daycare and our vocational training. This is, uh, again, a mission-based, uh, organization that, uh, I think you're going to find, uh, it's going to be great for the community. I'll slip through these slides real quick. We've got a great experienced development team. Uh, our offerings, as you can see, are, uh, uh, we've got affordable housing, home and community-based services, vocational job training and job placement. Uh, we're doing this throughout the country on a number of hospitals and hotels. Because of the, the pandemic and the distressed, uh, hotel hospitality market, there's a lot of, uh, as you know, the ADRs and RevPARs are down 50%, sometimes 60, 70%. These are going out of business either either in default or in foreclosure. We have a business plan and a mission that saves this for the community, brings jobs back to, back to the community and also, uh, puts it back on the tax rolls. Uh, I think I went over 20 seconds, but, uh, we'll send this to you so you can go through our package, uh, of what we, we do. Uh, these are some of our facilities. Uh, that's Pawtucket, Rhode Island. That's a 400,000 square foot hospital. We've got the same, uh, some of the programs that we're talking about here, adult daycare, education, Newcastle, Pennsylvania. Uh, also in Trenton, New Jersey, we've got a Wyndham Garden, uh, which is a full-service hotel. We've also converted into adult daycare, education, long-term care. Bristol, Connecticut, that's also a healthcare building. It has, uh, uh, some of the same attributes and same offerings. Tulsa, Oklahoma. Where I am, I'm in Chicago. We have, uh, Blue Island, Illinois. That's a 12 acre site, 400,000 square feet and a full complement of offerings there.
Dan, thank you very much. I gave you two minutes now, so.
Okay. And the rest?
If there's any questions, please stay on the line. And so if we have any questions, we can, we can go from there.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Looks like we've got a question. Uh, councilmember Stevens.
Yeah, this might actually be more of a question for, um, for councilman Tatum. I'm just wondering, uh, with the socialization and activities for 55 and over, how do you see this dovetailing with augmenting, interacting, whatever with, uh, what is, um, what our senior center is talking about? I'm not, I'm not saying that that would be any reason to, you know, preclude this project. I'm just curious what your thoughts would be.
Well, if, if this project is primarily veteran oriented, I don't think, I, I don't think there'll be that much overlap, Chris. We're trying to do some of the same things, but I think they're different populations.
Thank you. Claudia.
Sir, sir, what, what timeframe are you looking at for having, completing this project and having it up and running?
Uh, TJ, do you want to take that one? I mean, we got quite a bit of work, uh, ahead of us. Obviously we want to do this right. Sometime in, uh, probably third quarter, fourth quarter of, uh, 2021. Uh, we've got a, quite a bit of work to do. We want to make sure we're, you know, get proper support from the community and your, uh, you know, Pocatello city. So, uh, but we've, we've got a, you know, that hotel will look, that'll look very different when we're done with it. So, you know, we've, we've got a lot of steps. We've got, uh, already we have, uh, architects, engineers doing work. We've done the demographics. We know what the, uh, referral market is for the veterans. So we're, we're doing all our homework. We don't like to make mistakes. So, uh, we're looking at, uh, third to fourth quarter of 2021 to answer your question.
Thank you. And I think it's great that, that this is happening in our community.
We're, we're, I gotta tell you, we were very excited. I mean, everybody hates this pandemic, but, uh, it's, it's really, we're doing two things. We're helping out the vets and we're, uh, saving a lot of, uh, a lot of aspects of the hospitality industry as well as hospitals that we're involved in. I'm sorry.
You know, every, every, every situation is an opportunity. So I'm glad you're taking advantage of, of this situation to make an opportunity and that benefits other people. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Rick?
Dan?
Go ahead, Rick.
Is the Clarion, is the Clarion closed at this point? I mean, have you already acquired it? Is, is, are we at that stage yet?
TJ, maybe you want to address that? Is it, uh, you're leaving right on the ground there? Yeah. Um, my understanding is that transaction is not closed yet and the Clarion is still functioning and that it will continue to function until they begin the transition. And to add to that, a corollary to that is we are spending, we are spending real dollars right now to do the proper due diligence, make sure we get the proper zoning. And again, the support of the community. What we don't want to happen, have happen is, uh, you know, a big gap as far as, uh, uh, jobs and, and have this, uh, sit vacant for any period of time. So we want a clean transition here.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, then I would ask, uh, the staff, who on staff has worked with this? Looks like, uh, Matt.
This, yep. Ms. Matthew, can y'all hear me?
We can.
Awesome. Uh, so since Mr. Budge and Mr. McNulty, um, provide a detailed description of the proposal, my presentation will be fairly brief, uh, just touch on some of the higher levels as far as the planning end of it. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Matthew Lewis, senior planner with the city. As noted in the applicant's, uh, applicant's representative presentation, Lockwood Development Partners LLC in partnership with HSB Hotels LLC, the property owner, is proposing a contract rezoning of the Clarion. rezoning of the Clarion Inn property addressed as 1399 Bench Road, from commercial general to residential commercial professional, to allow the property to be redeveloped into a multi-use complex consisting of age-restricted, 55-years-old or greater housing, a veterans' education, and adult daycare. The proposed zone change does not require a concurrent amendment to the comprehensive plan, land use map, as the application is for contract rezon. Under the current commercial general zoning designation, residential uses are permitted outright in upper stories provided at the ground floor. Commercial uses also provided on the property. The proposal as submitted includes elements which do not neatly fall within the use defined by Pocatello Municipal Code, including multifamily dwelling units, households living, group living unsupervised, and group living supervised. For this reason, the rezoning by contract is being requested in addition to the fact that commercial uses will not be provided on the ground level. Again, the proposed use is exclusive to housing veterans 55 and older, which distinguishes it from a typical multifamily apartment use. Just like to note that all property owners within a 300-foot radius of the land to be rezoned have been provided notice of the public hearing in order that they may provide comment on the proposed contract zoning. Notice was also published in the Idaho State Journal, and two signs were posted on the subject property. At the time of the completion of this staff presentation, no phone calls were received and no written public comments submitted. Based on the information provided by the applicant and their representative, as well as city staff, commission, the commission recommends by four-to-one vote approval of the application from Lockwood Development Partners LLC, in partnership with HSB Hotels LLC, to rezon by contract the property located at 1399 Bench Road, to be zoned residential commercial professional, finding that the application does meet the standards for approval under Chapter 17.02.180 of Pocatello Municipal Code, with the conditions attached as part of the commission's findings. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Matt? Matt, you haven't had any other correspondence that we don't know about?
I have not, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, any in the clerk's office?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Then we would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application. Any testimony opposed to the application. See and none? I don't know if you have anything to rebut TJ and/or Dan, and I know TJ is an attorney, you wanna rebut everything, so we're gonna go ahead and, unless there's something that we just have to say, then I'm going to go ahead and I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, this items before you. How do you wish to proceed? We've got Roger, and then Claudia. Councilman Bray, and then Ortega. I can't, we can't hear you, Councilman Bray.
Mayor, I move that we approve this contract reason with the conditions listed.
Second.
I move that we approve this contract reason with the conditions.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you. We have a motion by Bray and a second by Ortega. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Ortega?
Yes.
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Tiedem?
Yes.
Tiedem?
Yes.
Larick?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, just a minute, counsel. Slow network connection. Okay, we're gonna move on. Thank you. Congratulations. Yep, thank you. We'll go to Agenda Item 8, Short Plaid Swisher subdivision. Councilman wishes to approve a short plaid application submitted by Swisher Properties LLC, represented by Rockman Engineering and Surveying, to subdivide approximately 47 acres into two residential lots. The property is located at 1154 Swisher Road. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standard and conditions. Were you gonna make a motion, or did you just?
I can. So, I move that we approve the short plaid for the Swisher 2 subdivision. And that's all.
Second.
With condition?
With conditions, yes.
Counselwoman-
Second.
Counselwoman Stevens, you're good. Second, okay. So, we have a motion by Larick and a second by Stevens. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Larick?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Tiedem?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item 9, Grant Application Rural Cares Act One-Time Technology Grant Application. If awarded, council may wish to authorize the mayor to sign related contract awards and authorize the public transit director to execute the grants, and any necessary amendments execution of the project is subject to award confirmation, legal review, and budget amendments. Grant is 100% federal and does not require local maps. Councilmember Tiedem.
Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval of Agenda Item Number 9, the grant application for the Rural Cares Act One-Time Technology Grant Application for the Transit Department, and authorize your signature on all contract awards, and authorize the public transit director to execute the grants and any necessary amendments.
Second.
Second.
Do I have a motion by Tiedem and a second by Stevens? Connie, could you please call the roll?
Tiedem?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Larick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Larick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 10, An Ordinance Establishing Standards for Face Coverings for Individuals When They Are in Public, Including Penalties for Violation. Amendment commencement date and proclaiming that it is effective upon posting in five public places of the city.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselwoman Larick?
I move the ordinance, Agenda Item Number 10, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second. We have a motion by Larick and a second by Bray. Connie, could you please call the roll? Larick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Tiedem?
No. No.
This is just the reading.
Yeah.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, establishing standards for face coverings for individuals when they are in public places, including penalties for violations, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon posting in at least five public places of the city. The provisions here are to 12:00 a.m. on November 21, 2020.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Mr. Mayor?
Adamson?
No.
Oh, hold on, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselwoman Ortega?
Yes, thank you. Martin Luther King said, "There comes a time when one must take a position that is neither safe nor politic nor popular, but he must take it because conscience tells him it is right." The COVID pandemic has taxed us all this year, and we're all weary of it. It's decimated businesses and hurt families. It's strained our healthcare professionals, not just physically, but emotionally as well. Personally, my family has been directly affected by this pandemic. Relatives and friends with the illness, the death of a close family friend directly from the COVID. My own sister is a physician who has lost a number of otherwise young and healthy patients to this virus. A couple of months ago, we had a roomful of healthcare experts, both providers and researchers, recommend a mask ordinance. These people warned that during the winter months and the onset of flu season, we would see huge upticks in cases resulting in overtaxing our hospitals, and we are now exactly where they said we would be. I have received hundreds of emails, both in favor of and opposed to a mask ordinance. Most very reasonable regardless of position, I have read them all. Some, however, need to be addressed. Many have expressed concerns that a mask mandate will be violating their constitutional rights. I have read the Constitution many times in my life, and again today, and cannot find any clause or amendment addressing issues of public health. In that situation, the Tenth Amendment then applies. "The powers not delegated to the United States by the Constitution nor prohibited by it to the states are reserved to the states respectively or to the people." There is nothing about wearing a mask temporarily that impedes anyone's right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Many are opposed to the mask ordinance because masks do not prevent COVID, and they are correct in their assertion, masks do not prevent COVID. What we do know, however, is that masks reduce the transmission of communicable diseases, of which COVID is one. Masks are one simple measure that can be taken, along with limiting gatherings, hand washing, and social distancing, which all result in a reduction of the rate of transmission of this communicable disease. Taiwan is a perfect example of how masks and quarantining and contact tracing have essentially eradicated the virus there. They have had one's case since April. Some have sent emails threatening not to vote for my reelection or to recall me if I vote in favor of the ordinance. To those, all I can say is, number one, I have no political ambitions. Number two, it is your recall, it is your right to recall any elected official. But I will not be threatened or intimidated by anyone or any group to vote for anything I don't believe is the right thing for this city as a whole. Lastly, I would just like to say that this city has some serious problems. We have a runaway budget, a murky budget process, no strategic plan, no assessment of efficiency, ridiculous property taxes, lack of economic development, increased poverty and homelessness in our population, which goes hand-in-hand with increased crime, drug trafficking, and drug use. I don't get any emails regarding any of these issues, but I've received hundreds of emails regarding the use, the issue of wearing a mask temporarily. I would urge all those who took the time to email regarding the mask issue to stay interested and remain involved in all the other issues I have mentioned, and then we can all be a part and work together for the needed changes in our community. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. Okay, Connie, would you call the roll?
No. Bray?
Yes.
No.
Larick?
Yes.
Larick?
Yes.
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Before I go to Agenda Item 11, I wanna just state, make one statement. We have people that are out here, people in the lobby, and people outside that are, have been protesting. I wanna compliment them all. They're peaceful, and they've been doing it the correct way, and I appreciate the city of Pocatello and the way that they've been able to handle and uphold themselves here. So, I wanna just publicly thank them for their attendance and things there. With that, I'm going to move to Agenda Item 11, Items from the Audience. This time it's been set aside to hear items from the audience, not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be heard at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting or matter brought forward under the Agenda Item. Items may be referred to by the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. And we, nobody has signed up to speak on anything outside of the thing, so with that, thank you very much. Thank you to the public that has been willing to come out, and for everybody that has spent time sending emails, they have truly been read. We take it seriously, and we appreciate your work and your attendance here. And counsel, thank you for everything that you do as well. With that, we are adjourned.